Good evening, everyone. Welcome back. Town of Tuxbury zoning board of appeals for June 24th, it's not 24th, is it? 2021 is in session. First order of business is approval of the minutes from May 27th, 2021.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from May 27th, 2021.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Okay. First item on the agenda is a continued hearing. Janice S. Harmon, heir of Paul K. Lebron, deceased for a variance from section 4120 and section 4130, appendix B, for a minimum lot size of the Tuxbury zoning bylaws to facilitate the separation and sale of two individual lots as shown on plans filed with this board. Said property is located at 1176 South Street, Ransville Road, assessors map 109, lots 53 and 54, zoned residential. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board.
Name and address for the record, please.
Attorney Bill Graemer, on behalf of the applicant, Janice Harmon, seated to my right. Introduce yourself.
Janice Harmon.
Thank you.
Resident of Maine.
Good enough.
In honor of 1176 South Street.
1176, yes.
Mr. Chair, we're here on a continued hearing on a variance application. You might recall that at the last hearing, we discussed an appeal as a party aggrieved as an alternate route for the relief being requested. That appeal was filed timely, but it wasn't scheduled for the public hearing for May. After last month's meeting, I went ahead and had that scheduled for tonight's agenda. If it pleases the board, I'd suggest we take that matter first before the variance request.
So you want to hold on to the variance request and go at your new hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
And if the second hearing, if the party aggrieved is successful, I withdraw the variance. There'd be no need for it.
Okay. All right. So let me read that one. We'll do our first new hearing. Janice S. Harmon, heir of Paul K. Lebron, deceased under Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 8, as a party aggrieved by a decision made by the building inspector in a letter dated April 6, 2021, to facilitate the separation, sale of two individual lots. Said property is located at 176 South Street, Ransville Road, assessors map 109, lots 56 and 54, excuse me, 53 and 54, zoned residential. Before we start on that one, though, we need to...
Hold.
We need to table it. We need to table the continued hearing.
I make a motion to table the continued hearing for Janice S. Harmon, heir of Paul K. Lebron.
All right. Motion's been made to table the continued hearing. And second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. So that one's tabled. Now we can move on to the new hearing. Same applicants. You don't need to state your name and address for the record. All right. Go ahead.
All right. So, members of the board, you may recall from last month's hearing that this issue involves two lots that are adjoining each other, 1176 South Street, which is a pre-existing non-conforming lot. It's a 10,000-square-foot lot. There's an existing single-family home. Adjacent to that is a lot which is Zero Ransavell Road, per the assessors' records. That is a conforming lot by today's zoning regulations. It's a one-acre lot with 150 feet of frontage. That lot is part of a larger subdivision in that Ransavell Road with similarly one-acre lots with single-family homes. Both are in the residential district. The issue is whether or not those lots have merged for zoning purposes. There's a common law doctrine that adjoining lots and common ownership merge for purposes of zoning. There is an exception to that, which I'll get into in just a moment, which we believe applies here. But we did, by zoning determination, letter to the building commissioner, Miss Noble at the time, asked that she determine that the lots had not merged and that they could be sold as separate lots, in particular, the Zero Ransavell Road lot would be sold as a buildable lot for somebody to put a single-family home on. The building commissioner's letter disagreed, found that they had merged, and suggested variance relief under 4120 and 4130. As I mentioned earlier, applications for both the variance relief and appeal as a party aggrieved were filed. So the first item which we're addressing at this point is the issue of whether or not merger has occurred. The issue is, and what the case law discusses, it's a common law matter. It's not something that's set forth in the town's zoning bylaws. It's not part of 48 zoning statutes. It's really a common law issue that you can look to case law to talk about what this board or court should consider when you determine whether or not two lots have merged. There's a 2015 case that I did come across from the Mass Land Court. It cites the factors to consider nicely. I thought I'd read those for you. The first is whether the adjacent lots have ever been conveyed by one deed or if they have always been conveyed by separate deeds. Second, whether the lots have been assessed separately by the tax assessor's office or assessed together as one lot. Third, the location of any structures on the property, in particular, whether structures have crossed the boundary line between the two lots. Whether the owner has ever prepared a plan showing the lots as merged together. Whether separate ownership is just a ruse to avoid the effects of a new zoning bylaw that may change the dimensional requirements. Whether a common owner ever exercised control over both lots. And for that particular element, they cite to a case that talks about control over two lots despite sham conveyances where they're actually putting separate names, but it's really one person controlling those lots. And lastly, whether the properties have been physically walled off or otherwise separated from each other.
Do you have that in our packet? Am I just not seeing that?
The particular case, I did not print it and put it in the packet. I certainly provided it to you. For the record, it's Gallagher versus Falmouth Zoning Board of Appeals. It's an April 8, 2015 decision. And here, this particular instance, whether the lots were conveyed by one deed or not, I have included in the packet the deeds which show you that they were acquired at separate times by separate deeds. They've never been transferred out in one deed. Mr. Lebron inherited the parcels from his parents. He held them until the time of his death. And now, through the probate process, they've come into the ownership of Ms. Harmon. Whether they've been separately assessed or not, I've included in the packet the tax assessor's records which show that they have, in fact, been separately assessed. The assessor's office has a valuation of $219,000 on the Ransavell Road lot and the classification code for that property is a developable parcel. So they consider it as a vacant buildable lot. And that's how the taxes have been paid on it. Location of structures on the property. 1176 has a single-family home that is within that lot and met the setbacks requirements at the time it was built. It's a grandfathered, pre-existing structure. There's no zoning violations with respect to that home. And there are no structures that straddle the property line. And of course, there's no structures at all on the Ransavell Road lot. There's never been a plan prepared that shows both lots as merged as one large lot. I would submit that the last few elements really don't apply. There's no ruse here to avoid the effects of the zoning bylaw in terms of control and conveying it to sham owners doesn't apply. And there's no physical wall, although I would submit that doesn't really apply here. There is, however, of course, the, I guess, the natural boundary line, which would be the tree line between the parties. It's not as if 1176 South Street was, you know, expanded or the yard was expanded into the Ransavell Road lot and used in any manner. So under all those factors, you can... The argument here is that these two lots have maintained separate identities, and therefore they have not merged and can be sold separately. 1176 would remain as-is, a pre-existing grandfathered lot, and Ransavell Road would be sold as a buildable vacant lot.
They don't plan on doing anything on the existing lot on South Street?
No.
You just want to sell the other one?
They'll both eventually be sold.
Yeah.
They're both going to be sold.
They'll both be sold.
Thank you.
You got 1176 and Zero Roosevelt, so it's the one that has nothing on it.
Right up there.
Yep. Now, when these were purchased, I know we talked about this last month. Mr. Lebron, I assume, lived at the South Street address?
He did.
And he purchased the lot behind him?
His parents did.
His parents did?
Yeah.
At...
It was him?
At the same ti...
I have the dates of the deeds in here. Let me just find it. The parcel, Ransavell Road, was acquired by LeBron family by deed from C.R. Trewick in November of 1967, taken in the name of Leo and Florence LeBron.
So November...
As husband and wife and Paul, all three of them, actually, as tenants in common.
So that was November of 1967?
Correct.
When's the deed for South Street?
November 1st, 1961, and title was taken in the name of Leo and Florence LeBron. Husband and wife as tenants.
So in 1961, they moved to South Street. In 1967, somebody started the development behind them, and they bought the first lot, the one behind their house, six years after they moved into South Street.
Correct. And the Ransavell Road subdivision, the earliest plan I located was recorded June of 67 that showed that development and all the one-acre parcels.
But they bought the lot in 61? Excuse me, 67?
No, 67, just after.
It sounds like a case he didn't want a house behind him, so he just bought the lot, left it vacant.
I don't know.
Retirement fund, who knows? And it's been assessed separately since 1961 and 67.
Yep.
There's nothing on the Roosevelt lot, nothing.
Nothing.
And the South Street lot is the same as every other lot on South Street?
Right.
All right. Any questions, board members?
Are you paying taxes on both separately? They're not combined?
Yes, they're separate tax bills.
Okay.
Separate valuations. In the packet, you'll see the two assessor's records with the separate valuations.
Sometimes they combine them. Six, please. Okay. Does anyone have any other questions?
Seems pretty cut and dry.
So what we need to do, like we've done before, is make a determination of whether... Did you say the... Did you say the assessor's paper was in the packet? I just see the deeds.
This is last week, sorry, last month's.
I have it with the variance application.
Exhibit P?
It was...
So the zoning determination request in the letter had all of that material attached, which is the record that comes from the clerk's office to this board.
Exhibit I.
I have copies from the variance application.
We kept it.
Yeah.
I kept last month's.
It's the last exhibit.
Under exhibit I, correct?
The last one, yep.
Yeah.
Please.
Got it?
On page two of the exhibit I for the Ransavell Road lot, at the bottom, you'll see the use code 1300. And then you'll see the valuation, assessed value to the right.
What do you have for frontage on that lot?
I'm sorry, I couldn't read.
What do you have for frontage on that lot?
Approximately 190 feet of frontage. And that's along Ransavell Road. So they both have frontage on separate streets, so to speak, conforming.
And it kind of has, kind of has a Roosevelt address, kind of. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
All right. Anything else, board members?
No.
Who's on this one?
She is.
Yeah, no, nothing else.
The three of us. I don't have anything.
Being a public hearing, we have to open it to the public. If there's anyone here who'd like to speak on this, audio or TV. No? All right. No one in the audience who'd want to speak on this one? Okay. All right, so you know one. If the board members don't have anything else... Do you have anything else?
No.
We feel comfortable closing both parts of the hearing?
I do. Do you?
I do. I do.
I am.
All right. Someone want to make that motion?
I'm moving to close both parts of the hearings.
Motion's been made.
A second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So let's have a little discussion. We've had this before. We've had it in the past.
Yeah.
If I remember correctly, what we had in the past was...
It was different.
Buildings.
Yeah. No, it was different.
This is playing a vacant lot.
It's similar to the situation we had a few months ago where they had that other... We had to make a decision on whether the lots were merged or not.
Yeah.
Sounds like this is very similar. We have to determine whether these two lots are merged.
Well, what happens is if you have a... If you have an existing non-conforming, which South Street is, back when it was built, it was fine, but now it's non.
But that's okay.
And you buy a lot next to it, it automatically merges to make one big, continuous, good lot. But we have a good lot.
Right.
We have an existing non-conforming.
Which was there beforehand.
Yep.
It was, the other lot was purchased.
Six years in between.
Right.
And the existing lot mirrors all the other lots on South Street.
And they're still separated paperwork-wise.
Been taxed separately for...
Yeah.
60 years.
Right, since day one.
The only question is, is that the new lot, when they build a house, are they going to be coming here for a variance because they don't meet the requirements?
No.
But if there's enough space?
That's why I asked for the taxes here. They didn't show frontage on that one. They show that it's a 1.02-acre lot and 190 feet of frontage, which means 50 acres, etc., which is fine. So it's... The lot on Roosevelt is conforming. Roosevelt lost it now. South Street... Now, this map doesn't show frontage either.
I mean, if you go by the lot, the plot plans, they look at the frontage on that one, looks bigger than the rest of the lots on Roosevelt.
It looks like it has a lot of frontage.
A lot more frontage.
Not a lot of baggage, but a lot of frontage. But it is an acre lot.
Yep.
So what we need to do... We need to make a determination of whether they were merged and vote on it. And then we need to vote on the party aggrieved. Would you agree with that? I need to make two determinations here, as you asked for a party aggrieved, which doesn't really say that we think the two lots should not be merged. So we kind of need to make a determination on both.
Agree on two. One is whether or not you agree with the...
Do we need to make a determination on whether the lots were merged? Because that's what they require the variance for.
Right, but now we got a new hearing. Last month, we talked about this.
Right.
And I don't think the variance that they were looking for helped them.
No.
I don't think that was the right thing to shoot for. But we couldn't hear a determination because that's not what was advertised. That's why we have the continued hearing and a new hearing. The new hearing is for a determination of whether they were merged or not. If we determine that they were not merged, then they don't need a variance.
So we only have to vote on the one, right?
Correct. But it's advertised as a party aggrieved. I guess if we just vote on the party aggrieved because the building commissioner... The building commissioner... And this one, the denial letter.
That it's contiguous in that they have merged.
That's what she stated.
But clearly, with all the evidence provided, it doesn't appear that they've been merged.
All right. So why don't we make... Let's have a vote on the party aggrieved. Because the party aggrieved is you're grieving that the two lots are not merged. So if we vote on a party aggrieved, then we're voting on the merger of the lots.
So a yea vote is saying that they've merged, and a nay vote is saying that they have not merged? Or is that backwards?
That was, because I thought we were agreeing with them, the party aggrieved.
So if we...
So if we agree, we have to say yea, because we're agreeing with them if they grieve
We always make a motion affirmative.
Right.
If we vote yes, we agree with the building commissioner.
Okay.
If we vote no, if we vote no, then we agree with the applicant. And I don't want to... All right. So we make... We've already closed both parts of the hearing, so we can make a motion. We make a motion in the affirmative.
Right.
For a party aggrieved.
Mm-hmm. I'd like to make a motion to approve Janice S. Harmon, heir of Paul K. Lebron, deceased under Mass General Laws of Chapter 40A, Section 8, as a party aggrieved by a decision made by the building inspector in the letter dated April 6, 2021, facilitate the separation of sale and sale of the two individual lots. Said property is located at 1176 South Street and Roosevelt Road. Assessors map 109, lots 53 and 54, zoned residential.
All right. Motion's been made.
Second.
Second. So we're clear for the record. If we vote yes, we are agreeing with the building commissioner.
Mm-hmm.
And a yes vote from us would be that the lots have merged.
Right.
We vote no, we disagree with the building commissioner, and the lots have not merged.
Right.
Okay? All right. So motion's been made, second, all in favor?
Nay.
Nay.
Seeing none. Opposed? Nay.
Nay.
Nay. So three nays on that one. All right. So do we want to make a determination, or do we want to leave it at that? I think the board is pretty clear that...
These are two separate lots.
We're in agreement that they're two separate lots.
Right.
That they have not merged.
Right.
Do we want to put out a vote stating that we agree that it's not merged just to help them in the long run?
I think we did by our first vote.
We just did.
I think we did by our first vote.
Right.
And we're all on the record as saying that...
We both.
It is not merged.
We all agree that it is not.
Not merged.
That it is not one lot, it's two lots.
Okay. All right. So we're done with that. Let's bring back the continued hearing that we tabled. We don't have to read it again. Same applicant. What would you like to do with that one?
Mr. Chairman, I request that a motion be made to withdraw that.
Okay.
Allowed me to withdraw that.
Okay. So now there's been a motion, the applicant is asking to withdraw the continued one without prejudice. If somebody would like to make a motion for that one, if there's any discussion, I'll hear a discussion. Nobody's here from the audience to speak on this matter.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the withdrawal.
You know what? Hold on. We did open this one?
Yes.
So I have to...
Close.
I have to open it to the public. Anyone here who'd like to speak on this? Seeing none. We need a motion to close both parts of that hearing.
I'd like to make a motion to close both parts of the hearing.
And second.
Motion's made, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So now we'd like to make a motion to withdraw without prejudice.
I would like to make a motion to withdraw without prejudice the continued hearing from May 27, 2021, for the Janice Harmon, heir of Paul K. Lebron, deceased for a variance from section 4120 and section 4130, appendix B, for minimum lot size of Tuxbury zoning bylaw to facilitate the separation and sale of two individual lots as shown on plans filed with the board. Said property is located at 1176 South Street, Roosevelt Road. Assessors map 109, lots 53 and 54, zoned residential.
Motion's been made.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
And also?
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
It's good to see you all in person.
This is the lots. We're all set. Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Next item on the agenda. Next item on the agenda.
Evelyn?
How do you say that second name? How do you say your second name?
Silva.
Evelyn and...
Clay de Omar Silva.
Alright, I got it. Evelyn and Clay de Omar de Silva, for variance under section forty-one thirty, appendix B. For front yard setbacks for section forty-one thirty-two. For allowed maximum lot coverage, as well as a special permit under thirty-six fifty-one. To increase the existing nonconforming structure of the Tuxbury zoning bylaw to construct a twenty-eight foot, eight inch by twelve foot, two inch patio roof. As shown on plans filed with this board, said property is located at twenty-four Algonquin Drive, assessors map ninety-eight, lot seventeen, zoned residential. Alright, so now on this one. We're gonna do, just so we know at the end, we're gonna do the special permit first. Because without the special permit, they can't have anything. Alright, good evening.
Good evening.
Name and address for the record, please.
Evelyn de Silva.
Address, please.
Twenty-four Algonquin Drive, Tuxbury.
Thank you. Uh, tell us a little bit about what you're doing, please.
I'm sorry?
Tell us what you're doing, please.
Is I go back? Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Um...
Look, I still want...
Do you want, you, you wanna say?
Yeah.
I don't care who tells me. Someone, someone tell me what you're building.
Doing this, we have no clue.
Me too.
So we designed to have a, um, like a hoof. Patio hoof, hoof patio. And to give more shade to our backyard, because we have no shade there. So in the summertime, we like to stay outside. And to cover our, um, um, bulky head basement.
AC machine?
Machine, um...
AC machine?
AC machine. So... We didn't know we, we needed a special permit or even a permit to start it. So we did, we did start it on last year, uh, before the winter started, but everything was closed and because of the COVID thing, and we have a friend who does construction, offered us to help and decided to do it.
So... You wanna build a patio, a, a roof over a patio?
Yes.
Behind the house or in front of the house?
Behind the house.
Behind, the backyard.
The backyard. And you already started this?
Yes.
Do you have any pictures?
Uh, we, we, uh, they have picture here, but probably they keep it downstairs. I don't have any picture here with you.
We don't really have it. We don't have pictures of the back.
Is it done, or is it in progress? What?
That's not, it's not done. We didn't finish it.
It's not finished?
Yeah, because they asked us for the permit. We stopped right away.
Yep.
Is, is the patio there?
Yes.
The patio, yes.
Is existing, it's old, or is new?
It's new.
The patio's new?
We made the patio.
Okay. The patio, you had permits and everything was in order? The right dimensions, the right everything with the patio?
The parents need permit too. I didn't know that.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a look like a landscape job. They said they don't need a pa, a permit. That's why we did.
Oh, who said you didn't need a permit?
No, I didn't know we need a permit. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
My friend do, he do this job for the company, and he come and, and make for, for us. He do this every single, every single day for Bileric Company. He, he... I know, I'm telling true, yeah. He do the job, he didn't say...
I was confused a little bit, because I was reading front yard setback. You're, you're on a corner. That's why you have front yard setback. Because you're on a corner. The back of your house is actually a front yard. And the front of your house is a front yard, because you're on a corner. So that... Because in your application, you're, you're asking for a variance from front yard setback. Which... Because you have two streets, because you're on a corner.
Yeah.
It makes it a lot further to each street. Most houses, twenty-five feet to the front, and then ten or fifteen to the sides, depending on what part of town you live in. But since you have a corner, you're twenty-five feet this way and twenty-five feet this way. So you, you need a lot more setbacks. That's what got you in trouble. And you're an existing nonconforming. Alright, when... When was the house built? Where's your deed?
Forty-one thirty.
Do you know when the house was built?
Uh, this is nineteen fifty-four.
Nineteen...
Fifty-six.
Nineteen fifty-six. Alright. How big is this lot?
That's what we're covering. Because it's a forty-one thirty-two as well.
How many square feet is this lot? Do you have any information on what you're building? How, how tall is it? How, I mean, I know I've got twenty-eight foot, eight inches by twelve foot, two. How tall? How, how high?
It's not on the, the chart that they, they did for us?
We, we...
There's no drawing in here.
No?
We send the frame plan to them here. You don't have anything over there? Oh, they, they send everything. The, I have the plot plan on here, if you want.
I'd like to see what you're building.
How tall?
How tall?
It's, it's on a, it's on the first floor in the house, like, what?
No.
Ten feet? Ten feet?
Nah, not this much. Probably less.
Ten feet's not a lot.
I know, but...
What do you have? You have pictures?
It's only the plot plan over here.
So it's the same thing that we have?
You have the plot plan?
We have the plot.
And you have the frame plan too?
I don't think we have, we don't have that plot plan.
And now, we send the plot plan and the frame plan.
We have this. That's what we have.
Oh, no, that's from here.
We had the plot plan.
Yeah, we have the frame plan and the plot plan. I'm sorry, that's the only one I have here. Why you keep talking?
It's the same.
Yeah, it's the same.
You guys for that one. You know, social separation. You want to share this one?
Uh, Rob. I'm sorry. The problem is, this one, they get me like five copies. The frame plan, they only gave me three. I left two here, and I sent the third one here too. That's why I want, now the frame plan.
You want this one back? Is that what you're telling me?
No, no.
Okay.
Because you only, I only have three copies from the frame plan. You know, and I don't have any more. It's big like this, I can't...
Okay. Well, this, this is good. This is exactly what I wanted.
Oh, no.
It's the ass.
Where are they building? Where, where are they building this?
Right here.
Just that?
Yep. Because it's only twelve feet, it's twenty-eight feet wide. Twenty-eight feet wide, it's only twelve feet deep. So it's as long as the house?
It's just a shade, right? It's a roof. To cover the yard. Is it gonna be all opened? It's just a roof?
All open. Yeah, it's not, we don't, we don't wanna blow it. Just for the roof.
They're not making a sunscreen out of it, they're just adding a roof. They're not making a greenhouse out of it, is what I was trying to...
Right, it's a patio for shade.
Yeah.
It is now. Alright, this is all one project, right? You had them do the patio, and then you were gonna do the roof.
Yeah, that's it.
I understand.
And it's gonna be open, just how she said. Just to put a table and chair and enjoy.
Couple of little columns holding it up?
After what?
Couple of columns holding it up. What holds it up? It's twelve, twelve feet away from your house.
Yes.
Yeah, from the, from the house.
What holds it up? Little columns, big columns?
Big ones.
A wall?
Big, no?
Yeah, big.
Big? Okay, not a wall?
Not a wall.
Not a wall?
No.
Okay, columns? Two, three?
Four by fours or something?
Four by fours?
It's three, three.
Three. One, two, three.
Three.
Wood?
Wood.
Yeah. Like this. Four feet center floor.
Okay. So big wood. Four feet in the ground. Don't you both speak Portuguese?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I see, I saw the name, but that's okay.
We, I speak Portuguese. Dan speaks Portuguese too.
Yeah, we speak Portuguese.
I think you guys are speaking English just fine.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
If you need our help, we'll help though.
We don't wanna be in the sun for the whole summer, I know, that's why. I have a problem in my basement door.
I understand.
With the water. You know? I don't want the water going in the house. Kill my basement.
Welcome to Tuxbury.
Yeah, welcome to Tuxbury. That's what we have. Water in the basement.
So the pad, the patio, the patio that's existing right now is already...
There.
But it's already violating forty-one, or what, what's the, uh, forty-one thirty, tables of dimensions? Because if the roof's gonna be ten feet close to the road, then the patio's already close, ten, ten feet from the road.
Mm-hmm.
Agreed?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Yes, sir. That's not what we're here for, though.
It's actually further away than the house.
Yep.
The house is closer, right?
The house is point seven.
Which is grandfathered in because it was built in nineteen fifty...
Four, six.
Fifty-four.
Point seven on one side and nine point eight. That's pretty close.
Yeah, it is.
That's pretty close.
We do have somebody on, uh, the line who wants to talk on it, too.
Alright. Being a public hearing, we'll open it to the public. If anyone would like to speak. If anyone's on the line.
Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening. This is Scott Thor of seven ninety Shawstein Street. I am but, Mr. De Silva.
You are but? Okay.
Um, so I gotta notice about this. I do not have an issue with this patio or his, the roof at all.
Okay, great.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
I actually have another butter with me that also would like to voice his opinion.
Yes, please.
How you doing? Sal, Sal Benal, four Algonquin Drive. Um, I'm the, the next door neighbor, and I have no issue at all with the, with the roof at all.
Great.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Did you bring the whole neighborhood? Anything else you'd like to say, sir?
No.
Alright, thank you for calling in. Thank you for staying on the line so long, too.
You're welcome.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Alright, anything else you'd like to say? Just say no.
No.
Okay, being a public hear, um... I'd like to make, somebody needs to make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to close both parts of the hearing.
I second that.
Motion's been made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion?
No.
No. It's not gonna make the lot any more detrimental than it already is.
Neighbors don't care.
And the neighbors are okay with it.
Alright, so...
There's two here that we have to approve, right?
There's two. You gotta do special permit first. Without the special permit?
Special permits, the thirty-six fifty-one.
Thirty-six fifty-one.
So... I would like to make a motion to approve Evelyn and Clay de Omar.
Clay de Omar.
Clay de Omar de Silva for variance from, or for a special permit under section thirty-six fifty-one to increase the existing nonconforming structure of the Tuxbury zoning bylaw to construct a twenty-eight point eight by twelve point two patio roof, as shown on plans filed with this board. Said properly, property is located at twenty-four Algonquin Drive. Assessment map ninety-eight, lot seventeen, zoned residential.
Motion's been made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, so voting members on this one, uh, just for the record.
Dan.
It's Rob, Nancy, and Dan.
I would like to make a motion to approve Evelyn and Clay de Omar de Silva for variance from section forty-one thirty, appendix B. For front yard setbacks and section forty-one thirty-two for allowed maximum lot coverage. To increase the existing nonconforming structure of the Tuxbury zoning bylaw to construct a twenty-eight by eight point eight by twelve point two patio roof, as shown on plans filed with this board. Said property is located at twenty-four Algonquin Drive, assessors map ninety-eight, lot seventeen, zoned residential.
Motion's been made, and seconded, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You're all set?
Congratulations.
You're all set.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Obrigada.
Enjoy the summer.
Thanks, man.
Alright, any old business? Board members?
We do have new.
Sorry, she wanna have folded that.
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can we, can we keep, can we keep one for the record?
Do you wanna give me back two? Or you need that?
Can we keep one?
Need one.
You can keep one, that's okay.
Okay, you can have one.
Yes.
That's okay, that's okay. No problem, thanks so much.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, sir. Take out two. Alright, so... New business that we have is we're in need of another board member again.
We are.
If anyone wants to join the zoning board of appeals. We're in the market for another associate member.
And we have new procedure.
And, and, not done yet.
Sorry.
Ray decided not to re-up, and I wanted to thank him at our first live meeting again for the time spent on the board. I appreciate it. Thank you, Ray.
Thank you, Ray. Thank you. Good luck.
Missy Ray.
Alright. So now, the new business, zoning board of appeals, rules and procedure, proposed revisions. If anyone has had the time, I don't know what they want from us. Uh, review the proposed changes. If the board would like to proceed with these changes or propose any of their own. Please notify Alexandria by email. Once the changes are agreed upon, a public hearing will be held where the changes are formally accepted. Alright, so this is, this is homework for the board.
Do we know when the, um, changes are gonna be reviewed?
Well, if you don't have a problem with what they're changing, I flipped through it real quick. A lot of it just looks like, um, wording changes. But, um, if anyone has a problem with it, send an email. If you don't have a problem with it. Don't send an email. It'll just magically go.
Fair enough.
I think I read something about Nancy Rego has to be chair or something.
You're reading wrong.
I was okay with that one. Uh, we need to reorg the board, because now that we're back live, because we haven't reorged in a while. And I heard Nancy wants to be chair.
We just, yeah, we just said.
No, we didn't.
Yes, we did.
No, we didn't.
We did.
I guarantee you we haven't. The last time we reorged, we were sitting here.
We were. You're right.
How long have we been out of here? A long time we've been out of here.
Oh, I'd like to nominate, uh, Rob Durkin.
I'm doing it right now.
It's on the agenda.
All right. Anything else, board members?
No.
I know we all, or most of us just came up for, uh, what's the word, reappointment, I guess. I know I said yes, you said yes. You clump again?
Yeah, I did. I also, mine was just a temporary.
We all did.
I'm, I'm three years. So that was my first of three.
Yeah.
I'm good for another two. Unless something happens.
Something happens. You never know what's going to happen until it happens. All right, anything else, board members? Happy to be back. Good times. If anyone would like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to adjourn.
Motion's been, and seconded, wow. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned.